Thank you, Chair Belknap. We will have Director of Law and Professional Practices Ben Rasmussen come forward, if you will, for a public hearing for administrative rule R-277-609.
Thank you, Chair. Ben Rasmussen, Director of Law and Professional Practices. The next agenda item before you is to follow up on the public hearing we conducted last month. With the help of your staff, we have compiled a hearing report as required by the Rulemaking Act Administrative Rules. That's before you today, and the next item on the agenda would be to accept the hearing report.
Thank you. I'll be seeking a motion to accept the hearing record as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Janet Cannon, second. Thank you. Seeing no lights. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. So now we are -- Board Member Klein?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend 609 to add a definition for harassment and discrimination-free learning.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to amend R-277-609 to add the following definition of harassment and discrimination-free learning as written on the board. Do we have a second? Seeing none. Board Member Earl?
I have a motion to add a definition for harassment and discrimination-free learning. Do you want me to read it?
Yes. Just read the whole motion as it's going to stand.
Yep. It means where students have the opportunity to learn in a positive environment conducive to the learning process and free from unnecessary disruption, an environment where students are expected to exercise self-discipline. And then I've just attached our 328 rule that has those provisions in it already. So, R-277, 328, 33A through D.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Board Member Hart, second. Would you like to speak your motion?
Yeah. I just think we need a definition around what harassment and discrimination-free learning is. This is a simplified version of just simply this is what we're looking at when we're talking about harassment and discrimination-free learning. I think in not having some kind of a definition or framework to work from, it leaves it too broad and open to be interpreted however, either an equity director or, who knows, public, you know, whatever, they can articulate what that looks like. And so, and also with the self-discipline, that is defined in the rule currently. So it just accompanies that.
Board Member Moss?
I have a proposed amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to add language from Title VI, which addresses the obligation to prevent discrimination after the word disruption, the words regardless of race, color, or national origin.
We have an amendment on the table as stated. Do we have a second? Board Member Cannon, would you like to speak to your amendment?
I did briefly. I think Member Earl's language is solid language. I think, as someone who practices in the area of discrimination, I think it's important to point out that that's what Title VI requires us to do anyway, and I think it would be helpful to call out in this rule that that's, you know, these good things that we need to provide to all students need to be done on an equal basis without allowing any discrimination on those criteria that are protected in Title VI.
Okay, thank you. Member Lear?
I had a question, and this is more to the underlying motion. Should I wait on that? I have one question for Member Moss and one question on the underlying motion. Should I?
Okay, go ahead and ask both, and we'll see if we can.
Okay. So the first one is to Deputy Stallings. I remember when this rule was being written and there was some recent, I'm reaching for the details, so forgive me that, but there was some discussion of efforts at the federal and state level to consolidate the definitions of harassment and bullying. And we use the term bullying to cover harassment. I think so harassment would be not confused with sexual harassment. I'm not sure if I have the, I'm not sure if I have those details right, but, so there was a reason at the time, and which still might be a good reason, to not have a definition of harassment. And can you help me with that? And then I'll ask, I had another question for Member Moss.
Yes. Vice Chair Davis, is okay if I am?
Yes, please.
Yes. It was a number of years back, I want to say it was either in 2016 or 2017, the state legislature amended the state laws or Utah Code provisions related to bullying, harassment, retaliation, et cetera. And at the time, they removed all the references to harassment. And I believe that was, I'm refreshing my memory right now, previously bullying was to describe physical acts of bullying, and harassment was verbal. And so they eliminated that phrase harassment because bullying was supposed to include both physical and verbal or emotional bullying. And so that was what happened at the state level with those changes to Utah Code, is that to eliminate the word harassment and include all forms of bullying, both physical and verbal, all under the one definition of bullying. Now, this latest language of harassment and discrimination-free learning, I don't believe HB 428 amended the bullying provisions. It's a different section of code than the bullying prevention sections of code. But that is, I believe what you're referencing is there was a time where the legislature removed the words harassment, and that was why, is because they wanted all forms of bullying, both physical and verbal, to be included in the term bullying.
So follow up to this?
Yes.
So are we causing, you know, are we causing a conflict? Are we, is it going to be internally a problem now with the various provisions of the code in addition to our rules, which now have a definition for something that is differently defined in state law?
So if it's okay?
Please.
I'll be honest that because these amendments came to us last night, as they did to all of you, we have not done any research related to this. I will say that our AAGs have done a little bit of research today, but, you know, it's pretty quick, and there's other things that are going on. So I could not answer your question. It would be something that we could research, but I don't know the answer right now.
Can we bring our AAGs up to talk to us about legalities?
Well, and can I say while they're coming, my concern is that I would rather have a little more thorough, complete analysis of this than make a decision that might conflict with or contrast with the Utah Code. I appreciate their quick and dirty research, but I want to make sure we get it right. So I want to hear what they have to say.
Okay.
But for me, that's not thorough enough.
Do you feel that you've had time to look at a thorough, a thorough look?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No.
What have you found in your quick and dirty, as Board Member Lear puts it?
Ashley can add to that, but would you restate your question one more time for me, Board Member?
The first part of it, or the what I just said?
The one you just said.
I think I, what I, I just was concerned that adding this definition of harassment might in some way affect the effort by the state legislature to define bullying, to not separately define harassment, to incorporate it in the bullying definition.
Yeah. And I don't have an answer for that. I have not researched that. I'd like to. I think we can. We look at legislative history and the statute and rule and figure something out there, but I don't have that right now. I'm sorry.
And I just, well, and my point is, I didn't, my question is really not that narrow. I just want to make sure in creating a definition of harassment, we're not conflicting with what I just mentioned, or with what federal regulations say, or it's not too broad or too narrow, or we shouldn't, we should be using bullying rather than harassment. I just think there's a lot, this is a lot more complex than being able to insert these phrases within 12 hours.
And you frame a great legal issue that we'd be happy to research. That's what you pay us to do. We just need a little bit of time to do that. I don't have an answer to that specific issue.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Hanson?
I just have some concerns that maybe are a little bit similar to what Carol voiced, but the word harassment has specific meanings to it, and I'm not sure those meanings are captured in the definition we have. I mean, normally we use harassment discrimination-free in employment law, kind of a workplace environment, right? And a lot of companies have harassment discrimination-free workplace policies. I just looked at EEOC's website. They say harassment is unwelcome conduct that is based on race, color, religion, sex, including sexual orientation. It goes through, you know, the list of categories, and it talks about when harassment becomes unlawful, but basically unwelcome conduct based on some classification or some demographic information. And then when you look at discrimination, treating someone less favorably because they belong to a protected class, that's the quick definition from the EEOC. So if we want to say something like's on the board, I don't think we define harassment and discrimination-free learning as that. I think we take that out and put in, we want a policy that covers these things that we want to do, because I think it becomes confusing when we try to define a word harassment, which is very well-understood in a lot of contexts, as something different. So my two cents, but I can't vote to redefine that where I see it as a term of art that's really, you know, spread out throughout a lot of our law jurisprudence all over.
I should know what EEOC is, but tell us again? Equal Employment Opportunity, okay. Because Webster's just defines harassment as aggressive pressure or intimidation, period, not necessarily based on those categories, but discrimination is legally typically based on those categories. Board Member Hart?
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
I, I, let's the first part of it.
Can you make the screen a little bigger?
Yeah, thank you. I just, I propose that we refer this to a committee for discussion, further discussion, because I do think as a practitioner, we have 1,000 different definitions that we have to follow, and I need one in this policy in order to be able to follow it as a practitioner. So I'd appreciate a definition, or at least, you know, choosing one of the definitions so that we have something to go on. Schools are constantly being ping-ponged, and bullying's a great example. What is bullying? Is it rude behavior? Is it, is it physical behavior? Is it, what are we talking about here? And so I do think that words matter in this case, and this is a pretty detailed directive, and I just want to make sure it's done right. So I, oh, I'm, sorry. I propose that we refer this to a committee for further discussion.
We have a motion on the table to refer this to committee for further discussion. Do we have a second? And which committee? Or you just, the chair? I guess Mark would choose that.
Chair's prerogative.
A substitute motion, yes. It's a substitute motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. I think I had a second over here already. Who was that? McCannon? I don't know. Somebody seconded it, and then Board Member Klein, so I don't know. Okay, we'll go with Board Member Klein, because I don't remember who it was. So, Member Hart, you already spoke to your motion, your substitute motion. Do you want to speak?
No, I did plenty.
So to your point of not knowing, I think bullying has been pretty carefully defined in board rule, and we've even gone through administrative rules, and you still don't know what it is. And so nothing we put on this is going to change really in practice what happens in schools, because people understand harassment to be unwanted behavior towards them. I mean, that's just what it is. But, Member Lear?
I guess I had a clarifying question, but every time I hear another comment, I think, I keep changing my mind.
Okay.
But my clarifying question maybe to Member Hart is, is, or maybe it's more a process question for Angie. Is this, are, would then the whole rule be under discussion? Is that what you're proposing? That the whole rule, it's time to review the whole rule? Is that what you're saying? Not just this one little piece of it? And is that how you'd make that motion?
Deputy Superintendent Stallings?
Thank you. So the motion as is that Board Member Hart just made would refer the full rule back to committee, and the version that went through public comment and is ready to be made effective would be put on hold. Another option you could do, which is similar to what the board did, I think, last month with R-277-919, is they allowed the rule to go forward and become made effective, but then they also referred 919 back to committee to discuss just the amendments. So if you wanted to, you could do essentially a version of, you could do 1 and 4. 1, direct staff to make the rule effective, because it is ready to be made effective. And 2, also send the rule to committee to discuss the definition and any other amendments, which would then take the pressure off, since we're supposed to have a rule in place by November, you know, of 2022. We have 180 days to make rules related to legislation. It would have 609, you'd be done legally, but then you could consider additional amendments. So I just threw that, wanted to throw that out as an option, to do both 1 and 4.
Is that a friendly suggestion to the motion maker?
Does that qualify as a friendly amendment? Okay, then yeah, that's a friendly.
Well, I'm just asking you if you want to change your.
I do, if that's an appropriate.
Without objection from the board, can Board Member Hart change her motion?
To the 1 and 4?
To the 1 and 4.
Yeah, the 1 and 4. I, I just, yeah. And I want some feedback from our legal team, and they say they need time, so.
Well, I'm impressed.
Yeah. But I would need my second, the second to be.
No, just the board. It belongs to the body now.
Oh, it belongs to the body? Okay.
Without objection, but Brad has.
Member Straight?
I don't know.
Okay.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Member Earl?
Yeah, and I, what am I speaking to?
You're speaking to the motion to put the rule forward and have the amendments be sent back to committee. Yes, 2.
And so the other amendments would be addressed too, or just this one?
We don't have any other amendments on the floor except for this one right now.
Okay, but if we moved it forward, if I had additional amendments, then those wouldn't be, am I understanding right? If we pass this motion, then those wouldn't be addressed.
Deputy Superintendent Stallings?
The way the motion is, it's just referring the rule back to committee, and then any and all amendments are on the table. Any, the rule would be up for reconsideration in any amendments. This is the way I'm reading that motion. It's not specific to certain motions presented today.
Okay.
What if we made it specific to certain motions today, like the definition of harassment and discrimination? You know, when it goes back to committee, the scope would be the definition of harassment and discrimination. Member Hart?
I would prefer, that's what my intent was. I don't want to open up all those amendments. I simply think there needs to be clarity, and I do understand that it's sometimes spitting in the wind, but any guidance that could be provided, needs to be provided in this rule.
So this motion would move the rule forward and send back to committee, to send back to committee to define harassment and discrimination?
So, hold on.
You can amend that substitute motion.
Oh, I can make an amendment right now. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. So on line, I don't have my line in front of me. So other, I'd like to add other appropriate measurements. I just don't have the line in front of me. Sorry.
82.
82. On line 82.
Can we copy and paste it? Or is it this?
That's, yep, right there.
Okay.
Just to add other measurements, leaving that up to the discretion of the school and what they, other things in order to update their policies.
We have an amendment on the floor as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Member Moss is seconding, but I have a question. Aren't there other measurements already stated in the rule earlier? Did I remember that wrong? I thought there were other measurements or indicators like suspensions and discipline logs.
You're looking at it right there.
Things like, no, I know it's not in this section, but earlier, were there, or are there not others in the rule? Deputy Superintendent Stallings or someone?
It says that.
I'm just wondering if it's needed, or is it inherent already in the earlier part of the rule?
Sure. Jeff Van Holton, Policy Advisor for the Board. So there, this is a fairly lengthy rule. There are a lot of what could be considered other appropriate measurements throughout the rule. I think the question would become, are the other appropriate measurements that are throughout the rule the ones you want, or are there ones in addition to those as well? Because if you don't do this, and you only go the ones that are listed out throughout the rest of the rule, if there's something in addition, that would not be covered by them.
Member Earl, did you have in mind for this to mean in addition to all those that are already mentioned in the rule?
In other words, it isn't restrictive.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor, and would you like to speak to your amendment?
I just, I did, I think I did, but I think in the policy definition that it's appropriate that we use many different appropriate measures, whatever those are. I'd hate to spell those out, because some districts may use some type of a measurement tool, whether that's incident reports or whatever, where other districts may have a different methodology or usage.
Member Moss?
I'm sorry, I had a broader question. We'll come back to you. Should I address it now? It was more to this definition, if it goes back to committee. It's not on this one.
Okay, let's come back to you, if that's okay. Member Lear?
I'm reading this, if I'm reading it correctly, and Angie can correct me if I am not, or Jeff, I'm reading on line 69, which is where this little 6 would fall under, and it says policy means standards and procedures that include, and then it goes through all of those provisions and other appropriate measures. So I read that include.
It was a minute ago.
Yeah, it was there and now it's gone. I read.
Do we have the draft with the line numbers that we could look at?
Print 15. Yes, it doesn't have the line numbers.
Do we have the draft that we had in the hearing?
While you're finding that, I can still, I guess, make my point, that I think that that includes on, after policy means standards and procedures that include, that means it includes but is not limited to. And so I don't think that is necess, I don't think the little 6 is necessary. Am I wrong about, is my right or wrong?
That is correct. Including is not an exhaustive list, just, it's the floor, not the ceiling, if that makes sense.
So LEAs could use other measures, as Member Earl says, that maybe not be listed in this rule, since that language is there?
They're not individually identified currently. Okay.
Does including always mean not limited to?
That is correct. If you ever see including in a board rule, that means everything to follow is the floor, and you could do anything in addition to that list.
Huh, okay. Member Hart?
And admittedly, I struggled with this, because I don't know which are littler and which ones are bigger, like the Roman numerals and the As and the Bs. But is it not, where is the beginning of the sentence that ends with are informed and updated by data obtained? Because I understand what you're saying, but in that sentence, it says that you're only using a climate survey. The other things are talking about what's in the plan. It's not talking about where you got your data from. I, I just wonder what, I'm needing the beginning of V.
Can someone put the beginning of V up? I actually had a similar question when I read it.
15A. So it goes, so the sentence is, and addition, see, I don't even know what, A. So you got to make a complete sentence out of this. So it says policy means standards and procedures that include blah, blah, blah. Yes. That are adopted, okay, then go down, and then it goes to, that say are informed and updated by data obtained through a school's climate survey. And the point is that we don't want to limit it just to one survey, that a school uses multiple points of data, and that makes a much better plan. And I'm just asking for clarification. Is that what you meant by the amendment?
Yeah, let's, Director Van Holton, I think, has an answer to that.
I do want to make sure that what the work the Standards and Assessment Committee did is recognized. That sentence was amended by the committee. It used to say and other regularly occurring surveys, and that was, a motion was made to remove that from the line. So it was in originally, and that has been taken out.
By the committee.
The committee took that out?
Correct.
So point of order, can I put it back in?
Well, you want to put in other surveys, or do you want to put in other measures? Because from what we've just talked about, there are other measures earlier in the rule that is not an exhaustive list, but does it refer specifically to this?
Policy.
The policy, creating the policy. Is, does the rule already say anything is going into creating the policy other than this climate survey?
The rule implies certain things. There's, it refers a lot to 613, the bullying rule as well, where there's also conversation within that rule. Without having everything pulled up and time to prep, it might take a while to look all that up and explain it all. It might be better in a committee, but there was a line that did say other regularly occurring surveys, not necessarily measurements, could also be in. But again, this, as Carol has pointed, or Board Member Lear, I apologize, has pointed out, this can, it starts with includes, so it, LEAs are not prohibited to begin with from using those other surveys or other measurements without explicitly saying so. If you wanted as a board to make sure that LEAs were very clear, that you want them to include other measures and other surveys, you could also put that in, but they're not prohibited.
So Board Member Earl, is your motion to have the board move to include the language now, or to have this line also sent back to be studied? This amendment also sent back to be studied?
If they're already able to include, this just provides clarification. I don't, I don't see this as complicated, because if they're, this is just making sure it isn't just the survey, right? And if it's implied, implied, let's make sure it's clear.
So is your motion to have the board vote now on including that language and not have the committee go back and look at it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it's that complicated.
Okay, so.
It's a clarification thing.
Okay, so everybody's clear. This motion is to add the words other appropriate measures to be. Member Straight?
So I guess I'm struggling with the word appropriate. I think I'd actually be in favor of this, because other appropriate measurements could be the sharp survey. So is, am I assuming that correctly, that, does the word appropriate, would that change anything? Or what does the word appropriate add to this?
Applicable.
Chair, if I may?
Vice Chair Belknap has an interjection.
I'm really sorry, but I need clarification from Angie. Angie, of our, of our choices.
Angie, of our, of our choices here, if we, we cannot be amending this, this rule now, is that accurate?
No, that, that would be option number 2, I believe, or 3. So currently, we, the motion was to do 1 and 4. 1, have it take effect, which you can do, and then refer, but you can't do 1 and 3. If you do 3, if we amend it today, we file it, it's another public comment, there could be another public hearing.
Right, so we can't amend now. It's what I'm asking.
Not and do number 1.
And, okay, that was the clarification.
You can do 1 and 4, but not 1 and 3.
Thank you. That was my clarification.
And so then we potentially are out of compliance if we have another hearing? If another hearing gets called on this?
We will be out of compliance, because we won't have a rule for another 3 or 4 months.
Deputy Superintendent Stallings.
We just have to file something with OAR by November, so you're okay. If we wanted to amend it today and not, so if we had gone down route number 3 and amend 609 today to include the language that Board Member Earl is requesting, you would approve it, and we would file that with OAR, meaning the version that we had the public hearing on would just sunset. It, it's gone. So then we'd start the process over, but you'll, you'd be fine, is what I'm trying to say.
So we can do 1 as amended, and 4 on the definition of harassment and discrimination? Yes, Deputy Superintendent Stallings.
So I guess the clarification is, you can actually do any of those 4. You have all 4 at your discretion. That's why we provided them. If we take no action today, refer it back to committee, let's say that it takes 2 committee meetings, you wouldn't fi, be able to file by November. So one option was to not worry about the November deadline, you could make today's effective. Then that would give you time to have it go to committee, discuss it for a committee meeting or 2, and then it would also go the board. But you actually could amend it today and file it. We would be filing it like by September 15th, so you would easily meet that November deadline. I hope that makes sense. So really, all 4.
So we can move forward with this amendment as stated, implementing the words "other measures" or "other appropriate measures." One last comment, Member Hanson.
I have a question and a comment, I guess. So then if we did file it, amended it, filed it, then it would open up for a chance for another public hearing, right, during that comment period? And another set of comments, which could very well delay us past the dates that you're talking about. I mean, yours is best-case scenario, that we get it out on time.
It's a gamble.
Right. Okay. The other question I have going forward is, if we can look at the amendment, I just want to make sure that this is an and and not an or, because that include, include is the, includes the provisions of all that, but then we're talking about down here, the standards, procedures, and training, those are the things that are informed and updated. If I did my diagramming of the sentence the way I learned in junior high, or whenever we did that, and so I just wonder, so that's an and at the end of, of a V, right? Are informed and updated, and then and, other appropriate measures. So that's an, that would be an add as well, that and.
Is that a friendly addition?
There should have been an and. I neglected to notice it wasn't there.
Okay. Member Earl, you're the last light up on this.
Yeah, so is it possible to move that these, I have 3 or 4 motions, if it's with the definitions, go back to committee? We move this forward. I, I mean, we've kind of talked about that already, but I would like these looked at, the 4 motions, and I'm fine with those going back to committee and being looked at versus.
Okay, so, so do you want to collectively move that those 4 motions be looked at in committee?
Yes. What definition would accompany that?
So this is a substitute motion to your earlier motion?
Yes.
Okay, there's a substitute motion on the floor, that Board Member Earl's 4 amendments be looked at in committee, that we, basically, that's it, because the other motion has, well, actually, should, okay. So Board Member Earl has a motion on the table that her 4 amendments be added to the amendment being considered in committee already, which is the bullying, or the harassment and discrimination.
Hers is already that, so it's 4.
Okay. So, so do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we need to look at the other 1 or 2?
You have 4.
Everyone knows what they are, though, and they're fine to have them go back to committee? Okay. Did we have a second? Hart. Second. Member Moss.
I, I support the motion, and just a brief comment on the discrimination and harassment part for consideration by committee. This is from the DOE's Office of Civil Rights. Title 6 requires "an educational institution to respond to racial or national origin harassment that is sufficiently serious to deny or limit a student's ability to participate in or benefit from the recipient's education programs and activities." So I think, I think the proposed amendment, which I, I support going back to committee, tracks that pretty well. It's the idea that you have an opportunity to participate and receive benefit from all the educational activities, and that you can do so without regard to race, color, or national origin. So I support having that looked at back in committee, and just recommend that review of the OCR's guidance.
Member Earl, and second, Member Hart, are you okay if we kind of combine your 2 motions, and Jenny, make yours that we move the rule forward, and then send those 4 specific areas back to committee for consideration?
As long, as long as it's getting filed immediately, and it's not delaying filing.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to file the rule, and to send the 4 specific stated amendments in backup back to committee to review and bring back to, I don't know, just send, send them back to committee. Committee will figure it out. Those in favor, say aye.
No, I have a question.
Question. Lear, Board Member.
Again, trying to make sure I understand this. So this has the net effect of finding, filing the rule without these amendments, and then only these amendments will be discussed.
In committee.
In committee.
Correct.
Not everything else, or anything connected to it, or anything that seems separate. I, if that's the case, I'm good. If it's, that's, if it's that.
That is the case, as I understand it.
Because these have already been reviewed by a committee.
Actually, as we've stated.
And voted down, and now here they are again. So I, one more look by another committee, okay, I can live with, but if this is opening up the whole thing, I'm not okay with. But you're telling me it's only these 4?
Yes.
That have already been looked at by a committee?
Yes. Vice Chair Bownap?
Okay. Sort of. Angie, may I go to Angie?
Thanks for that clarification.
For clarification. If these 4 pieces are brought back to a committee, can they open up the other parts of that rule? I just want to have clarification.
So practically speaking, when we do Open in Public Meetings Act, we, we agendize a rule. So it will be, I was just thinking through this and verbally processing with Jeff, that it's going to be actually up to you all to police yourselves on this. You all will have to enforce sticking with these 4 things, because there's nothing that legally, if you were to start talking about, you know, line 433, that's not on this list right now, I don't know that there's anything legally that somebody could then challenge you, if that makes sense. This is a motion with your intent that we're going to agendize R277-609 in a committee, and that we, as a collective body, are going to discipline ourselves to stick with just these 4 topics. So I hope that helps. I don't know that there's anything legally that would bind you to that under Open in Public Meetings, but I welcome correction from anyone else. But I think it's an agreement, it's a collective agreement, that you, as board members, are, are going to stick to that, that's, those topics.
But will the agenda list that, on the committee agenda, these lines of this rule are the agenda item?
It's difficult to do that, because we're not, if it were 1 section, let's say we were only amending Section 2, subsection 15, which is essentially A, you know, that A, we could agendize it as R277-609, Section 2, and you could restrict it. I don't think all 4 of these are neatly in.
Okay.
We could look through that.
Self-governance, people. Those in favor of sending this rule forward to be filed, and having the 4 areas of amendment in backup moved to a committee, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Member Klein is opposed, and Member Cannon is opposed. Thank you.
Point of order.
Yes.
Well, no, it might not, never mind. It might not be appropriate.